Thursday, April 6, 2023. Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals. Would you please call the rule?
Bruce Forster.
Here.
Craig Burrow.
Here.
Mike Pratt.
Here.
Glenn Hughes is here. I believe he's on a phone call in the hallway.
Okay.
And Rex Meyer is not currently present, but is expected to be here in about 40 minutes.
Okay. Glenn Hughes is now present. The next part of business is the approval of the previous minutes.
We don't have any. We didn't have a meeting last month.
What that?
We didn't have a meeting last month.
So we don't have approval minutes. Okay. And anyway, we're going to start tonight with the second petition because there's two people up here who have to sit back, relax, and watch the proceedings in the first petition. And so we need to have Mr. Myers here for the first petition. So we're going to the second petition. And the second petition is in the matter of the petition of Judy Harvin, 924 Eisenberg Road, Amboy, Illinois. The petitioner, it's a petition for a special use. Petitioner Judy Harvin states as follows. The petitioner owns the real estate identified as pin number 11-16-15-300-002. The property is located at 924 Eisenberg Road, Amboy, Illinois. The property is presently zoned as Ag 1 Rural Agricultural District, and the petitioner desires a special use for the purpose of operating a campground. Is the petitioner present? Can you come forward, please? Before you sit, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
The date is 6.
I'll need to swear in.
Need to swear in too? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? State your name.
Dee Duffy.
And?
I'm the Lee County zoning administrator.
Okay.
Notification for petition 23P 1609 was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners posted at the property, and the zoning board agenda and petition was displayed on the Lee County website. I would like to submit a copy of the filed stamped petition as exhibit ZO1 that you have in front of you. A legal notification for this petition was published in the Amboy newspaper on March 15, 2023. The required newspaper invoice and collection of certified mailing receipts have been submitted for the record as exhibits ZO number 2 and ZO number 3. The requested special use would be in keeping with the future land use plan that is spelled out in the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, located in agricultural area with surrounding areas categorized as recreational areas. I would like to submit a copy of the comprehensive plan's future land use map as exhibit ZO number 4. The Lee County Health Department is working with the Illinois Department of Public Health in getting the petitioner licensed as a campground by the IDPH. The petitioner will have several items which will require attention to become compliant with the IDPH, which may have more restrictive requirements for septic and well than our local health department. And I'd like to submit the Health Department's email exchange as exhibit ZO number 5. The Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District has prepared the natural resource report. I'd like to submit that to this report as exhibit ZO number 6. And the zoning office has received two letters from nearby neighbors supporting the special use proposal and added their concern about zoning the property for a campground, which could include camping trailers or motorhomes and cabins which they would be opposed to. I'd like to submit those letters of support as exhibit number 7 and number 8. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, a real quick one, Dee. You're jumping a bit on the exhibit numbers. Is there any particular reason?
I have the submitted mailing receipts and newspaper invoice here, and the resource report is very lengthy. I do have a copy of it if you'd like to look at it.
Okay. So those would be the other exhibits?
Correct.
Could you summarize that resource report?
The soils limitations. The NRCS Soil Survey indicates 32% of this panel is composed of soils with severe limitation for corrosion of steel and shallow excavations. The wetlands, the National Wetland Inventory Map, identified wetlands as zero acres and 0% of this parcel. The floodplain insurance rate map indicated that the parcel to be outside the 100-year floodplain. In addition, 32% of the soil is hydric. And there are hydric inclusions in the soil types, which may be prone to ponding. The NRCS Soil Survey indicates 100% of this parcel is composed of soils with a very severe limitation for septic systems. The prime farmland soils are an important resource for Lee County. 100% of this parcel is composed of prime farmland soils. The district encourages the use of onsite detention for stormwater runoff, and the NRCS Soil Survey indicates that 32% of the panel has a moderate to high potential for erosion.
You stated that there was no wetlands on that property?
Says the National Wetland Inventory Map identified wetlands on zero acres or 0% of that parcel.
That's what I thought. Okay. I'll ask Ms. Harvin the other questions relative to that. Any other questions from the board? From the board to Dee? Yes. No? Mike?
From the public?
Anybody from the public have any questions for Dee? Is that microphone on?
My name is Ken Bernarden, and my question is just, we were talking about 40 acres, is that correct?
Yes.
And we've not looked at making it a smaller parcel than the 40 yet.
I believe we'll get into that when we get into the testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? There are no further questions. Your turn. Please state your name to the board.
Susanna. Judy Harvin.
And now tell us about your project.
So this property's been in my family for 50 years, and we've been coming out as a weekend, you know, kind of a weekend recreational property. About a year and a half ago, I moved out here full-time. Prior to that, I lived closer to the city in Riverside and the Brookfield area, and I owned a yoga studio there for a number of years. I sold that studio, continued to teach there. So I've been involved in the yoga community in that area for 20 years now or more. So a few years ago, I started to offer yoga and yoga retreats to my students to come out and practice yoga on my property. And it just kind of took off. Yoga retreats are very popular right now, but most retreats take place Costa Rica or, you know, out of the country. So I wanted to offer my students something where they could drive for, you know, 90 minutes and come and be in something that felt a little bit exotic but wasn't so expensive. And there isn't anything really like that in the area. And when I say the area, I mean the state of Illinois, probably Wisconsin, Indiana, Iowa. So it's kind of become popular. And so I reached out to the Building and Zoning Department to make certain that I was in compliance because I'd like to continue with this with the support of the community. Can I show my? All right, so click. Click again. So I say that Soul Farm is an experience. The camping part of it isn't really what I'm selling. I'm selling an experience. I think of it kind of like an outward bound sort of experience. People come out, they are reserving a spot, they have activities. We do yoga two, three, four times, meditate. It's, well, I'll show you a little bit more about the experience. Can you go to the next slide? Yep. And then again. So again, it's all an outdoor experience, and it's primarily, we sell yoga retreats. Okay, click. And then also, sometimes I'll do something a little bit different. On the left, I did a mother-daughter day where mothers and daughters would come out and do yoga together. Sometimes the woman on the right's doing mandalas, so there might be some artwork or something else that we do. It's all very like nature and art-based. Click. Another thing that we do that I'm really excited about is we do horse experiences. We have horses out on the farm. Our horses tend to be older. We bring in horses that maybe are, don't have a job to do anymore, but they're in their 20s, and so they're well-experienced horses. And I use this as an opportunity to teach women about communication and about leadership. For a lot of them, this is as close as they've ever been to a horse. One of the things about coming out to this property for so long is I've always had horses, and I know the value that they can offer to people in learning about their body language and how they can learn how their body language communicates. Can you click again, please? And how they can communicate non-verbally. I find this to be really valuable, like with teachers and people that have to present, like maybe in a work environment. So yeah, that's another thing that we do out at Soul Farm. The women, we do have scheduled activities. And I say women, I do have men, but it's primarily women. I have a feeling that most of the men that have come out mostly are coerced by their girlfriends and wives. So I say women a lot because it is primarily that, meditation and just time with the horses. So there's free time in the center of a typical day where they can just enjoy the property. Sometimes they might go off the property, come into town, you know, take advantage of some of the things that are in the area. Click. And click again. So one thing that I mentioned is that this is like a very unique business. There is not a real curated yoga retreat facility that I know of in the area. And this is what I'm hearing also from the women that come on out, is that when they Google Illinois yoga retreats or Midwest yoga retreats, I'm the first thing that pops up. Can you click again? And, you know, because of this, I do have business insurance, but it was kind of hard to get it because I don't fit neatly into a package. So Stephanie Cooper, who lives here in town and is back there, works for a company called Parderage Insurance in Sycamore. And after months of searching, she was one that found a great policy where they were able to put something together that covered our groundwork with the horses, our yoga, and also this overnight experience. So we really have a very unique business, which I think is probably why it's so successful, because I don't fit into a package. You can't just go and find this anywhere. So I get calls 12 months out of the year for people that want to come out. Right now, I can only do business June, July, August, September because I'm an outdoor facility. Can you click? And again. So bootstrap business basically means this is all a self-financed business. I've tried very much just to work with the facilities that already existed on the property. So for example, on the left, you see that's my kid's old bunkhouse that they used to have their friends sleep in, and we worked really hard to dress that up and make it a really cute little bunkhouse for the women to sleep in. Can you click again? I call it the yoga barn. That was an old machinery lean-to. Again, I put a concrete floor in that and just cleaned it up. And now we have a covered place that we can do yoga if it rains. Click. The corn crib was a place we basically just stored firewood, and we cleaned that up, and now we have a really cool place for women to have massages. That's another extra thing that we offer during their free time. Click. And like I said, we've just been doing all of this work basically ourselves. This is me and my daughter working on the bunkhouse. Click. But also, I do have volunteers that come out. A lot of women just want to come out and work. This is something that they don't have a lot of opportunities to do back where they live, so they can come out and just really dig in and put in a good day's work. And I wouldn't have the business that I have if it wasn't for the women that have come out and put sweat equity into what we are doing. Click. And then not only the sweat equity, but just people that have like creative skills that they can offer, like artists that can come and help me create the signage and dress up our buildings. Click. I do have a second bunkhouse. Again, this was built by me and a friend of mine that is an engineer by degree in construction and volunteer. So we just built another little plywood and frame bunkhouse for the women. So now we can sleep 12 in bunkhouses, eight in one, four in the other. Click. We also put up two tents if we need them. I don't have any desire to do more because they're a pain to put up, and most of our season seems to take place when it's about 95 degrees. So we have the two tents that we put up and have to take down after the events. We use air mattresses, but our air mattresses are jazzed up a bit with like foam pads and linens. And the women, it's called glamping. You may have heard that term before, glamour camping. Click. I have a bathhouse. It has two toilets, two sinks, two showers. As you can see, it's an open-air bathhouse. The water from that goes into a holding tank that gets pumped out when it fills. Click. And click again. So a big part of my business is creating a really healthy environment. One thing that we do is we spend time out in the woods. Click. Our food is really healthy. We cater, our food is catered in from outside chefs, and it's all eaten outdoors under the trees unless we have to go into the yoga barn because it's raining. Click. And these are, you know, just another example of the kind of food that we serve to our guests. We eat a lot of beet dip. That's beet dip on the right. Click. Click again. So one thing that's been important to me from the beginning is to try to promote the idea of local eating and seasonal eating. This is a sample board from one of our retreats where we listed what we were serving for dinner and the different farms that provided some of the produce for the meal. So that's really important to me, to try to promote the local agriculture. On the left, that's Jo and Margot Reaver. They own Hollyhock Hill Farm. They were two of the pioneers of the Twin City Farmers Market, and they've worked with me. It's very labor-intensive to do it this way. I spend a lot of time running produce around and because right now, my caterers and chefs are located more in the Geneva-Batavia area, but this is something I'm really committed to continue doing. Click. On the left, it was a very small event. There's a group called Stickers and Stilettos. There's some women that live in Amboy. They have a social media presence. One of the things that they do is promoting like activities and crafts for kids. And another thing that they were promoting is, and I know I'm going to say this wrong, it's a chartouchery? Chartookery boards? Do you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, okay. So they came out and they showed us how we could create our own chartouchery boards. And so that was a partnership that we did with some local business people. On the right, this gal Emma came out. She was, came out from Wisconsin. She's a student at a university in Wisconsin, I guess University of Wisconsin in Janesville, and she happened to be a horticulture student. And she just was so intrigued with some of the edibles and the forjables, medicinals that we had growing in our woods. So she took us on foraging walks and then came out again. And that's something I'd like to expand on, too. I think that's really cool, and the people are so interested in that and just observing like the local and native plants and how they can or used to be used medicinally. Click. This is Tanya Yingling. She provides massages for us. I also have Sarah Smith. Both of them live here in Dixon. And sometimes we've had other massage therapists come out, but Tanya sort of has been a standard of mine from the beginning. Click. And this is Margaret De La Fuente. She has a business in Rock Falls. She does Reiki and energy work. She is very well versed in like the Mexican and Native American traditions of spirituality, and she did a full moon retreat with us last year. That was really great, and that was something women really loved. Click. And then click again. So I know some of the concerns that the board has is what impact the business would have on my neighbors. One of the things is by design, this business is supposed to be low-impact. I would not create light pollution because the people are coming out because they want to see the stars. You know, they come from a place with light pollution. What I'm showing you here is what Soul Farm looks like at night. In this particular photo, where if you look underneath the tree that's kind of glowing, you see all these little bowls. Those are crystal bowls. The woman that's behind them, she's got a mallet, and she plays these bowls, and they sound like little bells or chimes. And the women just lay and meditate and listen to that. That's probably about as loud as we get, and this is probably about as bright as we get. Click. Actually, this is probably about as bright as we get. I took this picture, I thought it looked pretty neat. We use, in the tents I give, the women just like little lanterns, battery-operated lanterns. And so this is again about as bright as we get, but this light doesn't travel. As you can see, it, this particular setup, this is where everybody's sleeping, and it's very contained, and it's acre away from everybody else or farther. So I don't think that we create much light pollution at all. Click. Parking might be a concern as well, but again, because we limit our guests for each retreat, we really just don't utilize or need that much parking. A lot of our guests come carpooling with other people. So what I'm showing you here is just sort of my parking area, and I've never had any parking spill out really past that area, just along that fence line. Click. Signage, I don't really use signage. This is the only sign that I have. It goes up right before people start arriving so that they can identify my driveway, and it goes down after the retreat is over. And I do not leave signage up at all after retreats. Click. And this is my garbage can. I have never surpassed the capacity of that garbage can, even after a retreat. My guests would frown on creating a lot of garbage. So I would say a course of retreat, we probably create two tall kitchen bags full of garbage maximum. Click. So that's what I have to say about what my business is. Like I said, it's a very unique kind of business. I am hesitant about this campground designation as if, I hope that what I've demonstrated here shows that we're not really a traditional campground. I don't have RVs coming, and I'm really not interested in that. So I know that my neighbors have some concerns about that as well, as do I. I don't know if it's the appropriate time for me to open that up. Yeah, Dee, you think I should? And, you know, we've looked at a couple of different options. One would be reducing the footprint of the special use permit to only cover the area that is the active part of the retreats, which is really just my yard. We do walk in the woods, but nothing really functionally happens outside of that small area. If this is something that you'd be willing to entertain, you know, the idea of it, I'd also wonder if this special use permit could be attached to my business. I think that the neighbors have a concern. My goal is not to sell my property. This property has been in my family forever, and my hope is that it stays in my family forever. However, I can absolutely see their concerns about, should the property change hands, having a campground designation go with it, I think would be really scary for everybody involved, including myself. I would love it if you were able to entertain the idea of attaching it to my business, because once my business is over, I have no desire to have people camp. And never do I have any aspirations to have RVs coming and going or anything like that. This is basically the extent of the camping that I would want to happen out on the property.
Are you going to increase the number of participants, the number of advanced? Why the change now that you're here?
Why the change? Well, because, I'll tell you, a couple years ago, I was reached out to by the treasurer saying that they felt that I should be paying a hotel tax. So I did meet with the treasurer about that, and I said, I don't think I fit the designation of a hotel, nor do I think I should be registering with the state of Illinois as a hotel. So that's why I started the process of reaching out, because I don't want to operate, you know, I want to operate with the blessing of the county, not trying to hide what I'm doing from the county because I don't want to pay tax. It's not about tax at all. I'm happy to pay tax. I just am concerned about being put into a box. I just am concerned about being put into a box that I don't fit in having to meet requirements that aren't really essential to my business. So, that's why I'm reaching out now. Because if it doesn't require zoning change, I'm happy. Because you're absolutely right. I don't have any aspirations to have more people out at a time than I have right now.
So, then you're not intending to build cabins?
No, I have two cabins. I might however, though. One thing I will say is that I have a primarily outdoor business right now. It limits me to be able to do what I do from June, July, August, and September. I would like to be able to expand my season a little bit, which would require me to have some sort of an indoor facility to be able to work with people. Another thing that I do that's my bread and butter is I train yoga instructors. So, I would like to offer a retreat-type training to yoga instructors. So, perhaps say October, November, I have a weekend where yoga instructors come out and we work intensively for a weekend, provide continuing education hours. But I would need some sort of an indoor space to do that. So, my hope is to build a building that would provide like a barn kind of a building. Because actually, my house is really small. I don't have a washer, a dryer, or a garage or anything. So, I'd like to make a building with a loft up above that would have some sort of space that we could meet in if it rains or if it's cold. That's still kind of in the works. Because obviously, I want to make, I'm not going to invest in a building like that if I don't have everybody's blessing to move forward. But that would make this a more viable business for me, something I could do beyond four months of the year. But as far as the size of the events, I don't really want to increase the size of the events. I'm really happy with that size. You know, it's something I can do well. Whatever I do, I want to do really well.
Ms. Harvin, a couple of things I've got. How many horses do you have then?
So, I had two. I lost one in December, so I have one right now. However, two horses that are neighbors of mine, the one in the photo, come from the Hamleys. Their girls used to show and everything. And so, now their horses don't have a job to do. So, they come out and they mostly get loved up. That's about the extent of the work that they do. It's really hard.
And the other thing, we've got the map here of your property, your 40 acres. And wherein, it looks like your house is located on the north side of that, of your property?
It is actually on the south side of the property.
Okay.
It is the southmost building in that yard.
Okay. So, is some of your 40 acres tillable farm ground then or not?
So, around that is pasture. It's probably tillable, I guess. You know more about this than I do. But I turned it into pasture, mostly because I wasn't really happy with like the spraying and stuff that was happening right by my house. Then in, yeah. So, of that parcel that we're talking about is all pasture. None of it's tilled right now and hasn't been for a number of years.
Okay. And how long have you been doing this at this location then?
In 2020, when COVID's, if that was COVID year, I thought I would start doing some small retreats, but then COVID hit. So, what I did is I just did some day events. And that was really popular. It gave people a place to kind of get away for a day, socially distance and get outside. So, that was probably the year that I started. But I started mostly with just day events. I think I did do one or two overnights, maybe just one because of COVID.
Okay.
So, now we have a map. Can you show us what were the 10 acres you'd be interested in?
I think they're talking about perhaps five. So, you see the ponds on the right?
Yep.
Yeah. And then that's, yeah, that's the whole area. Then you see that shed that's silver. That's really not part of it. That's my machinery shed. But I think that we're, oh, we're kind of sticking that in there. That area of buildings really is about five acres. To the left of that shed, there's a circle. That's where we do the round pen, the horse work. And then way to the right by the ponds is where the bunkhouse is and the bathhouse is.
You mentioned your water holding tanks and whatnot. So, your old farmhouse or regular house, does that have a septic system?
It does have a septic.
Okay.
I believe it's like the original septic.
So, then after this five acres, now you're saying five acres you would be happy with.
Oh, yeah.
So, you would survey that five acres? So, we have a...
Legal description.
If that's, if that's your request, yeah.
I think we'd have to.
Right.
So, we're, you're talking about building another facility for, to extend the season. It would be within that five acres, I assume then?
Yeah, so it would probably be just to the south of my house. So, the house, like I said, right now is the southmost building. And it would probably be just south of that. And when I say just south, I mean just south. Because if there's a garage, I want it to be close to my house so that... Yeah, that, let me see, that's not it. Yeah, there you go, there's my house.
So, that's the original house right there then from the farm? So, they had quite a lane to go to get there?
Yeah, I'd probably have to rethink that because I have to drive through my yard all the time. Yeah, that's the lane where Dee is doing that.
Yeah.
So, at the top of that area, that's the building that you're using for indoor when you need to...
Yeah, so that's a machinery shed. And off on the farthest north side of it, I'm not really seeing it clearly, but there is that lean-to there. Okay, yeah, it's obscured by a tree right now, but that's it, yeah. You can see it.
Okay. And what, you don't use the machine shed itself for anything at this time?
Not as far as the retreats are. It's used to hold equipment.
Okay, you still have equipment out there. I didn't know if that was maybe where you were going to look at doing your enclosed area or something.
Like I said, I just use that lean-to to the side as like a covered area for if it rains. But other than that, no, that machinery shed is not part of the retreats. It's shut and nobody goes in there.
Okay. I didn't know if maybe that was part of what you were looking at going in the future when you were talking about some retreats in the October, November time.
No, if I do that, I'm gonna have to build, I don't have any indoor facilities for anybody right now. That machinery shed isn't something I'd want to go into. And it's, you know, it's a machinery shed.
It was mentioned on the report about poor septic conditions. But if you build something, they're gonna, the health department will have to put a new septic system in. And it's not, I mean, they can get around different systems in case you can't disperse the water and stuff like that. But that's one issue you'd probably have to deal with if you build.
Yeah, I'm, one thing at a time. Like right now, I'm doing this. But yeah, absolutely, if I build, that's what I've already been showing Dee my plans and making sure I'm at least on the right track.
And those ponds, those were dug out? They're not natural ponds?
You know, when we bought the property, the one on the right existed. Yeah, that one there. I think my dad dug out the one on the left.
Okay. I was, and the reason I was asking, when you've got the one that overlaps into your boundary, but it looks like that was dug as well, looking at the side.
I'm not sure about that. I feel like that's almost like a wetland. That, during a drought a number of years ago, it was bone-dry. Yeah. So, I don't feel that was ever dug out. I feel like that is a natural wetland. It looks pretty much like a pond now.
Well, it was, it indicated in the resource report that there was no, and that's with the three, with the two full ponds and then the overlapping pond. That's why I was asking about the wetlands in the report, which said zero percent, percentage acres in wetlands. So, I just, I had seen, I had seen the ponds and I was a little confused by that report. But it does appear that they're, that they're dug.
Yeah, maybe it was at one point and just wasn't maintained. I don't know.
How deep are the ponds roughly?
I don't know for sure. But I'm gonna say maybe in the center, 12 feet, 10 feet. I can't, I wouldn't quote me on that.
That's one thing probably your liability insurance is worried about if they use your area as far as.
Yeah, yeah, no. And we don't, we don't use those, like we don't swim or anything in those ponds. But we do, you know, maintain them. They're just aesthetic for us.
Any more questions over here? Alice?
Are your retreats limited to weekends only? Or do they occur during the week?
The, right now, they start Friday night, usually like 4 o'clock, maybe 5 o'clock, and end either Saturday at about 5 o'clock or Sunday noon.
Okay, would that change if you were able to build a building that would allow you to extend your season?
I don't know. I don't know, Alice. I hadn't really thought about that. Like perhaps sometimes, you know, maybe a Thursday night through a Sunday, you know, extended weekend thing. But I, I don't know for sure yet about that.
Okay. What typically would it, how many people come out? What is the highest number of people?
The highest number that, of guests that we can have is 16.
And if you were able to build the building, what, how many would that allow you to accommodate?
I don't know for sure that I even want to accommodate more than that, that I'd even want to use that building except in inclement weather.
Okay.
I really don't know that I want more than 16 because it's a lot of work to have 16.
Okay, so you do not anticipate this growing into, you know, 100-person retreat?
No.
Okay, you intend to keep this small?
Yes.
With having people present, do you have a fire safety and severe weather safety plans for your camp?
Yes, so I've been talking with Dee about working with the fire department to develop a fire safety plan there that's gonna be, you know, appropriate. And as far as severe weather, then I have canceled events in severe weather. I can't do anything that's not gonna be safe for people.
Okay, that's all I have.
One other question that we'll discuss probably. How much traffic is on that Eisenberg Road in a normal day during the week?
I don't know for sure, not very much. Usually if a car goes by, I stop and identify it. So, it's, it's a very, very quiet road and I like that. And I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that. That's one reason I don't put any signage out.
So, it's basically just the neighbors are using the road?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm trying to figure out how to, where you're looking at breaking out the five acres. And although I appreciate your intent to limit it and think that's probably appropriate, I'm just trying to get a, if that's a 40-acre plot, I'm just trying to get a handle on. It's mostly around the ponds and the buildings. Have you had any type of measurements done? Do you know that five acres will be adequate?
Yeah.
For that?
The, Brenda at Soil and Water did like a five-acre thing around it. I think I have the report. And is that outlined Dee on what the board is looking at? So, it's basically just looking at the yard, which encompasses the buildings just past my house and then around that round pen area.
This line then, I'm assuming? That's kind of a, that's gonna be a difficult parameter to survey. Going over here. I've never seen a surveyor try and do something like that.
Seeing like.
Oh, a description. Yeah, well, it's normally around a natural, a natural barrier like a creek or a river.
Right. Getting back to the road game, you're, when you direct people to there, do you have them go down Shaw Road on the blacktop and then go north? Or do they come in from Route 30 or whatever and then south to your place?
You know, I don't direct them to that extent. I give them the address. I could tell you Google usually takes you down Shaw Road. And I think that's primarily how they're arriving.
Ms. Harvin, how unreasonable or how difficult would it be for you to, and no conversation's been had up here. I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing this out, to actually get a surveyor out to look at the area that you want to utilize and come back with a specific description of it? And I guess what I'm saying is, you know, we've gone through most of this conversation right now. But would it be a problem if we continued the process until some later date? And none of these guys, I mean, a couple of them just looked at me like, what are you doing? But I'm, I, like I said, I appreciate the fact that you want to limit that area. But I also don't want to make it difficult for you or put you in a situation where you're trying to squeeze something in. And being able to have a defined legal description for that area might be, might be helpful to both you and us. Because if it turns out from the standpoint of the surveyor that it, you know, it ends up being six and a half acres or, you know, closer to eight acres or something like that with what you really want to enclose, then I don't want to be limiting you by five acres and you've got to try and figure out how to configure that.
The concern with that is that it would still require to have a survey done without knowing whether this is going to be approved or not. She's trying to save cost and we don't want to.
I, no, I understand that.
And what you may consider doing is limiting the, you know, the amount of acreage on the special-use permit and have a contingent upon her getting a legal survey done at that area. And then we can attach that legal survey to the special-use permit for our records for enforcement purposes.
Now, like I said, the part that's designated, what appears to be designated... Now, like, like I said, the, the part that's designated, what appears to be designated as five acres on, on this resource map is rather a convoluted border. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure a surveyor's gonna wanna try and do that.
Well, what about giving her six acres to figure it out, not to exceed six acres?
Well, I was, I was thinking that something along that line. If we wanted to continue to proceed, I was thinking something in the, at least five acres not to exceed, and I was actually thinking eight acres, but, giving her, if we wanna do that, then a parameter within that range.
I think that would be appropriate.
Ms. Harvin, um, this is probably a little bit of a repeat of, of Alice's question. But you do not see yourself expanding the timeframe for these retreats beyond the Thursday to Sunday range?
I don't really. Um, if I did, it might be more for the trainings, and those are primarily taking part indoors. You know, like I would have the indoor facility and be working indoors. Um, but even that, I wasn't really in my planning to go into the week on that, because most people are available on the weekends.
Yeah, so there is a possibility of that.
I, I never like to say never, but I haven't entertained that so far. It hasn't come up in my plans at all to do that.
I'm just trying to evaluate some criteria that are comfortable for you and comfortable for your neighbors. And if the property were to be sold, um, for whatever reason, that the neighbors wouldn't have a fear of some significant expansion. But I think the week, the weekdays or the days of the week, if you were limiting the acreage and the, um, the number of occupants within that campground.
Right.
Probably is not even relevant.
On the other hand, as we've done in the past, it could be for her use only. And when she would no longer run it or, um, sell it to somebody else, they'd have to come in and get their own zoning.
Yeah.
So.
And I, and the special use, the special.
I like that idea.
You, you understand that?
She likes that.
You like that? Yeah, we can put a special use, that's what it is, a special use, is that we can put restrictions on it.
Right, right. I'm, I'm, all, my neighbors are here, I know they wanna talk. And I think that they would be, well, I'll leave it to them, but I'm in harmony with them. I don't want a campground on this property.
And.
At all.
And we could also put a restriction that there's no campers allowed.
Okay.
We can do that.
We could put no more than 20.
No, no, no RVs, campers, that type of thing.
Yep, that I already intended to do.
Well, I understand.
The only reason I would want one might be personal use. Like, if a friend, you know, was coming out personally, but not a business event, that would be the only reason a camper would ever end up on my property.
Under the county code, she would be, as the property owner, be allowed to have one camper on her property. Any more than one constitutes a campground, so.
Right.
And before you guys start considering your finding of facts and conditions, could we?
We need to.
Yep.
We need to ask.
Public.
If there's any more questions from, if there's any more questions from the board at this point?
Okay.
Question.
But you get probably, probably six acres and do it.
My name is Ken Bernarden. I live at 13866 East Beltal Road, Rochelle, Ohio.
Are you asking a question?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna ask.
Comment.
I'm gonna be asking a question.
Okay.
I guess my question is, ends up being a comment, but I did.
Then I need to have you swear.
If he's gonna, if he's gonna provide testimony, don't we need to finish any questions or?
He has a letter.
Yeah, but we need to find out if there's any questions.
So technically, we should be doing cross-examination of the petitioner at this time. And that would be a time for the public to ask questions only, and then we would have a time for presentation of evidence?
Well, the first part, does anybody have questions or? No questions.
Now we could go into presentation of evidence by any members of the public. Technically.
Now state your name.
My name is Kenneth Bernarden, and I'm the co-trustee to the piece of property that's just south of, that Ms. Harvin has. And I'm in support of what she does, and the board's done a great job. I wanna tell you, you, you've basically answered all my questions. But I know that keeping it a smaller piece is the answer. Doesn't matter to me, I think, if it's six or eight or what she's doing. But I am in support of what she's doing. And, um, the fact that you've made it small and you've covered a lot of bases that I, I think we give, um, total approval for what she's doing, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? State your name.
Hi, my name is Toni Averbeck. I live at 903 Eisenberg, Amboyl, and I across the road from Judy Harvin's property. Um, I fully support what she's trying to do. And as Ken said, thank you. You've addressed a lot of our issues and a lot of our concerns. The smaller portion is wonderful. The, um, limiting the people, you know, I know she's not, she doesn't do. They are not a rowdy bunch, I will tell you that. They're quiet. And I love, I love seeing the glow of the tiki lights at night. I've told you that before. It's very serene. Um, the people that I have met that have come out, they are always wonderful. Traffic on the road is negligible. It's, I, I would like to see this go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Troy Chandler. I live directly at 921 Eisenberg Road, directly east or west of her property. I'm in complete favor of what she has going on. You guys have addressed my concerns, you have my letter. My concerns was the motorhomes being there and a legitimate campground, and that's not what Judy's after. Yeah, as far as the property goes, I'm all for it. Absolutely.
I got no further questions. So we go, you wanna go to findings of facts?
Let's move to findings of facts.
Judy wanna make a closing statement?
What's that?
Does Judy wanna make a closing statement or anyone else?
Not sure. Do I want to make a closing statement?
Just if you had anything else to add.
I don't think so. Like I said, I, I am in favor of the reduced size, and I'm also in favor of keeping the permit to my business. That would make me much more comfortable even than just the reduced size. Um, yeah, I think anybody, yeah, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. All right. So if we move on to the finding of facts, first item being the effect of the proposed use upon the character of the neighborhood.
You wanna just throw something out? I, I just.
And I'm not even gonna have to write this down because now we have a recorder.
I, I had for A, no effect, and for B, that there are several campgrounds in the surrounding area.
So that would be your motion?
I could, yes, I would make that motion. Nobody else has anything to add.
No new effects.
Yeah, I'm not writing it down anymore. I'm just using this as a guide. All right. He's made that as a motion. I'll.
We have that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Craig seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Effect of the proposed use upon traffic conditions.
According to the testimony, very little. According to testimony, very little change.
I'd even modify that motion to say, according to the testimony of both the petitioner and her neighbors, there's very little impact.
Are you good with it?
I'm fine.
Modification.
I'm good.
Okay. That's the motion. Do we have a, do we have a second? Craig seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries.
Effect of proposed use upon public utility facilities.
No effect.
I would second that.
The comment may be, you know, after we've seen the things that usually a business uses some type of energy or something, you know, electricity, but this is very low usage of any type of utility.
This is a tent and they give them a lantern.
Yeah.
So that's a motion. Do we have a second?
I seconded. I already seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? We've already had that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Effect of proposed use upon public health, public safety, and/or general welfare.
I, I, I got one. A, uh, when the retreats are in session, there is an increased risk of a need for an ambulance service. Be on that. That's all I have.
That's a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I, yeah, we can act on that one.
Okay.
Second? Second, yeah, yes.
Craig seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
I'm gonna throw a, a second under that, um, another effect on the use of public health, public safety in general.
You didn't let me say that motion carried.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that motion carried. Now you can say what you want.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a B under there. However, motion being however nominal impact to the general welfare, public health, or public safety. The impact would be predominantly to the residents of, or the, um, the users of the campground.
That's motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Rex seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Effect of proposed use upon the surrounding properties. I'd make a motion that per the testimony of the petitioner and her neighbors, there is nominal, um, effect on the surrounding properties.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Effects of the proposed use upon environmental concerns.
There's no effect, as far as I'm concerned.
Under the current usage, there is none that's new or different.
So your motion would be that, under the current usage, there appears to be no, no particular environmental concerns? I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. Generally, we can do the recommendation to the full board and put the recommendations based on that following, correct?
We can do the recommendation to the whole board, but then we can put the restrictions that we think need to be applied.
Yep. I would make the motion that this be recommended for approval to the full board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition to the whole board. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
And I would make the following motion. Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that petition, if the petition for special use is granted, that the property be limited to, the special use be limited to not more than eight acres.
That's, uh, are we doing those as motions?
Motions under the recommendations.
Okay.
Wonder the timing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I would like to see that lowered to six acres. Rex has been working here, and I think six gives her plenty of opportunity. I, I know it's a small acreage, two acres, but I think that was her intent. That's what the neighbors want. I think we should keep it small.
Well, and I didn't think eight was getting too. I was more concerned about including the ponds into that area.
Well, I think the ponds would be okay. I'm more worried about it getting into the open area that, that opens. that, that opens room for campers and so forth down the road.
Okay. I would, I would accept a, a change to that. There's, yep.
Okay.
I would accept a change to that motion to reduce that to six acres.
Okay. Motion has been reduced to six acres instead of eight acres. Do we have a second on that one?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion further?
If something down the road needed to be changed, what would be the process if, you know, she needed a couple more acres? Have to come back to zoning board again?
Yes.
Okay.
At least she would know the petition is approved at that point.
What's that?
At least she would know that her petition is approved at that point. Yes.
I'm just talking a couple years down the road. Is something changed?
Any further discussion? The motion is, is that we limit it to six acres.
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries.
I would make the motion that if the Lee County, the ZB, Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the petition for special use is approved, that there be no more than 20 people on camping or in residence at a time.
So if I, does that include people that are volunteering to help me, or is that just the guests?
That would be.
You, I, I said camping or in residence, so I'm assuming that your volunteers are coming and going.
Well, they may spend the night because if I have an overnight retreat, I usually have two people working with me. So that's 16, 17, that's 19, including me. That's.
Well, you don't, you're not going to count. And that's why I went up from the 16 to the 20 to allow for some fluctuation.
Yeah, I, as far as the guests, the 16 is like, fine, I just need to have some wiggle room for my support. If, if you're including my support in that, then I might.
Why don't we say that's 20? I, I, I don't want to keep arguing with you, Glenn, but I'm not, I'm not too much in favor of any number, really.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think of how they're going to, I'm pointing to Alice and Dee, how they're going to.
It would be difficult for us to monitor.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you're going to make them go out there at 10 o'clock at night and count heads or something, you know, I mean, how are you going to do that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's probably a good point.
I, I don't.
Let it, let it die for lack of a second. I'll make another motion. The Lee County, the Lee County ZBA recommends that if the Lee County Board approves the petition for special use, this special use would be for Ms. Harvin's use only when she is, and when she no longer runs it or chooses to, no longer runs, runs, runs or of the property. Excuse me, I got to think of the right wording.
Conducts the business.
Thank you. When Ms. Harvin no longer is conducting this camping or yoga retreat business, the special use ceases to exist.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Craig seconds. Any discussion?
Glenn, I hate, I hate to keep doing this to you.
It's all right. We always work.
I would thought maybe we could add another sentence to that even, that if the property is ever sold or transferred, this zoning change will be non-transferable to the new owner. You know, not.
But if she's, she's no longer operating the business, then that's.
She could be operated and then sell it. I mean, I, I just, I, there's no reason to add, not to add that, I don't think. It just clarifies that we're both. We just make, want to make it very obvious that this is her petition and not.
For her purposes and her purposes only.
Correct, yeah.
So what you're recommending is the possibility is that she could sell the property but still run the, the business?
Well, I guess. I never thought of that. I was just worried that she had a, an ongoing business and then decided to sell it.
Well, then she'd no longer be operating the business.
Whoever that new person is would need to come back in and get their special use. That's the way it's always been done.
No, yeah, well, we don't want to get into that. This, this, it just needs to be clarified. However you guys want to do it. I don't, I don't care. As long as you're comfortable.
Do we have a, we got a second on that, didn't we?
I, go ahead and do that one, and maybe I'll just make another motion saying what I.
Okay, but yeah, that's what I was thinking, maybe easier.
Yeah, just go ahead and do yours.
So we've got a second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries.
So I make a motion that, that if the Lee County Board approves this petition, it shall also, one of the covenants shall be that if the property is ever sold or transferred, this zoning change will be non-transferable to the new owner.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that one?
Belt and suspenders.
What's that?
I said belt and suspenders.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. One more?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Almost forgot that. The Lee, the Lee County ZBA recommends to the Lee County Board that if the, the petition for special use is granted, that no camping trailers or RVs, except those that's allowed by. Operated or except those allowed for the owner.
One.
One would be permitted.
Second.
We have a second by Rex. Any other?
Comments?
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion, motion carries. Your motion is passed by this board. We'll go before the full county board on the 20th. Is that correct? I think that's what, yep, on the 20th, and then we'll get the results after that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is that a morning or evening? Board, county board meeting? Take a break.
That ended up sounding that way.
Oh, I, I don't have it.
Oh, I haven't got it. That one with the little picture?
The one that.
Yeah, Bruce.
Probably the one you're writing on the back of.
No, I'm writing on the back of my agenda.
There it is. I told you, he's, he's got some of my papers. He can't keep all straight. All right, we're going to take a break before we go to the next one or not? No.
No.
What if I got to go to the bathroom? What if I have to call the.
You'll call the break.
Okay.
I know that's where we're going.
At this, at this point of. At this point of the meeting, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Craig Burrow for the next petition. Everybody left?
Everybody left. And the reason before, because this is because Glenn and Bruce are somewhat affiliated or whatever to the petitioner. Okay, at this point, the next petition on our agenda, which was listed as being the first one, is petition number 23-P-1608, petitioner Douglas Hicks. Personal permanent parcel number 18-08 dash 16 dash 400, or dash 400, dash 0008, located in South Dixon Township. The petitioner is requesting a special use contingent upon the approval of a map amendment for the property zoned as I-1 Planned Industrial District for the construction and operation of farm equipment, machinery, sales, service. At this point, I will call on our zoning petitioner, Ms. Duffy, to give a summary of the notification. And I, I thought one swearing in a night was enough.
I guess one swearing's enough.
Yeah, one swearing's enough.
Thank God.
Okay, go ahead, Dee.
Notification for petition 23P-1608 was sent by certified mail to all adjacent landowners posted at the property in the zoning board agenda, and petition was displayed on the Lee County website. I would like to submit a copy of the filed stamped petition as exhibit ZO1. A legal notification for this petition was published in the Dixon Telegraph on March 14, 2023. The required submittal of the newspaper invoice and the collection of certified mailing receipts to the adjacent landowners have been accepted for the record and presented as exhibit ZO number two and number three. In the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, the city of Dixon's future land use plan generally depicts future business and manufacturing development on the east side of the city extending to Sink Hollow Road and near the I-88 interchange. The requested special use would be in keeping with the city of Dixon's land use plan that is spelled out in the Lee County Comprehensive Plan. I would like to submit a copy of the Comprehensive Plan's future land use map as exhibit ZO number four. The Lee County Health Department has no objections to this petition as proposed. The only concern would be if there was a need for water or a septic system which would be addressed during the building permitting process. When asked how far the nearest city of Dixon water main was from the said property, Matt Heckman from the Dixon City Water Department expressed in an email that the nearest water main was approximately 225 feet from the edge of the proposed property. I'd like to submit that email as an exhibit number five. The Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District agreed with the Lee County zoning office that a resource report is not needed due to the existing building and driveway area covering more than 70% of the 1.35 acre parcel, making it, making it impossible to restore the exhausted farmland. And I would like to submit a copy of that email exchange as exhibit number six. The Illinois Department of Transportation was notified of the petition and the property's location on Illinois Route 26. In response to that notification, IDOT has no objection to this petition, so I'd like to submit that letter as exhibit number seven. Because this petition is within the mile and a half boundary of Dixon City limits, the city of Dixon was also notified. The Dixon City Council had considered the petition on April 3 and voted unanimously to object to this petition. I'd like to submit the city of Dixon's resolution of objection as exhibit number eight. Any questions?
Okay, is there any questions about what Dee just covered?
City, city of Dixon, give me any testimony or any reason for the letter?
I believe the petitioner's attorney will cover that in their testimony.
Okay. Anything else for Dee? If not, we will move on. I can't even hear you here. Yeah. Now we'll move on. Calling the petitioner and his representative. And at this point, yeah, I swear to man, please raise your right hand. Do you sound this way or affirm that under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Sign that. And Mr. Hicks, do you wish to speak to your situation or your counsel? Okay, go ahead, whoever you want to handle it then.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Douglas R. Hicks.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I grew up in South Harmon on a family farm. Went, attended envoy schools, attended Sock Valley Community College, was hired with the Lee County Sheriff's Department in November of 99, retired October of 2019, and joined family business CNN Supply LLC, DBAFarmChains.com.
And what type of business is CNN Supply LLC engaged in?
I would say it's an industrial supply store, agricultural store.
And, and you mentioned that it's, it does business under the FarmChains.com name?
Yes, it does.
And, and what type of business is that engaged in?
I sell agricultural chains to farmers.
And tell us the history of that business, if you can.
My father-in-law, Kenneth Novak, started the business in approximately 1984. He was located in a smaller building just south of, just south on Hennepin. And then he purchased the building at 105 South Peoria in approximately 1995 and ran the business out of there. In 2008, he started FarmChains.com, and it has since been ran out of that building.
And when did you acquire that business?
I came into the business after I retired, October 2019. My father-in-law passed away approximately two years later, and I immediately became owner. And it's been approximately two years since then.
And so FarmChains.com is, is part of or under the umbrella of CNN Supply. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. I, FarmChains.com is, probably does three times the revenue of what CNN Supply does.
And does that business offer any online sales or purchases?
It does. I would say approximately 80% of my sales are online. 20% are walk-ins. And when I say online, it's either ordered online through my website or phoned in. I talk to a lot of farmers in the day.
And so for those online orders, I presume you, you ship those items to the customer?
I do. Some are shipped, some are just drop shipped from my distributors. UPS does come every day to pick up. FedEx Express also comes to my location and picks up.
So at your current location, can you approximate how many times or how many individuals you have in your store at one time?
Some days I don't get any walk-ins. Sometimes I could get up to five people that walk in. Sometimes it's people just being nosy and say they've never been in that building before. It's very rare to have any more than one person, one customer in there at a time.
What are your business hours?
7:30 to 4:00. If a farmer calls me and needs something after hours, I'll, I'll go in. Or on Saturday or Sunday, I'll go in.
Do you do deliveries?
I do. I usually do deliveries in the morning after I drop. I usually do deliveries in the morning after I drop my kids off at school. So sometimes I'm not back till, at the latest, 8:30.
And so you are under a contract to purchase 1546 Illinois Route 26 in Dixon, is that correct?
Yes.
And that contract is contingent upon you obtaining the, the required zoning to operate your business from that location?
Yes.
So, so tell me about the neighboring parcels of land adjacent to that address. For instance, is there, is there a farm located nearby?
Yes. To the south and to the east, it's all farmland. To the north, there's an entrance to, I believe it's whatever, trucking. Across the street is another business, kind of, kind of to the north.
And so it's on the boundary of the industrial park, is that about right?
Yes.
And so it's located adjacent to other properties with industrial zonings?
Yes.
And there's a current structure located at, at 1546 Illinois Route 26, is that right?
Yes.
Is that building currently being used?
It is not, it is not. It was the old Tyson Hog Place. I would say about 50% of it is tore down already.
And as for the remainder of the building, what, what is its current condition?
Not good.
And so through your petition for the map amendment and special use permit, you desire to move your business, CNN Supply and Farm Chains, to this address?
Yes, it is.
And so I've submitted, what I'm going to mark is just petitioner's exhibit one. I've already handed it out to everyone. You've got a copy in front of you. Is this a building that you're planning to construct on that property?
Yes, it is.
And tell me about the dimensions of this new building?
It is 48 by 72.
And so how, how does that compare to the existing structure at that property?
It is smaller than the current structure.
And, and you plan to tear down that existing, that existing structure?
Yes, I do. And take out all the concrete and start new.
And so looking at this exhibit, can you walk us through your building plans?
So you see obviously the overhead doors. That's going to be a warehouse, warehouse, store, my product. Where you see the doorway, when you come in there, that's going to be an office area. That's going to be 16 by 42. At the back of that, it's going to have like an open floor plan. At, at the back, there's going to be one office and one bathroom. And two double doors that lead into the warehouse.
And so looking up at the, the map that's on the screen there, it shows a gravel parking lot. Will you keep that the same?
Yes, I will.
And approximately, do you know how many parking spots that you think you'll have with the current building plans?
Approximately six to eight. I believe there's more than enough room. I'm aware that semis used to come in there and turn around.
Do you have any signage proposed at this time?
I do. I would like to, a very nice sign wherever the county allows me to, per their code.
And so prior to erecting any sign, will you reach out to Dee Duffy to confirm that the proposed signage is in conformance with the Lee County Code?
Yes.
What about exterior lighting? I don't see that noted on your drawings here.
Whatever is required by code, but I would more than likely put one each over the overhead doors. I would put lights underneath, I believe that would be called the soffit with the wraparound porch. And if need be, a light to light up the parking lot.
And do you anticipate the local traffic to increase if you're allowed to operate your business from this location?
I do not. I've, we've operated downtown Dixon for a long time. Never had any issues.
Is it your intention to continue to build on your online sales?
This is a great opportunity to grow my business in general.
And you understand that after your building is constructed, that you're required to have a commercial inspection of that building?
Yes.
And you also understand that you need to have an ADA compliant parking spot at this location?
Yes.
And you're willing to cooperate and communicate with the Lee County zoning administrator on those items?
Yes.
Do you believe that your business, if, if able to operate from this location, do you believe that it will diminish the neighboring property values?
No, I believe it would increase it based on the current, the way the current structure looks.
And you base it on the premise that you will improve that property, is that right?
Yes, my plan is to have a very nice looking property.
And so will the operation of your business generate any noise?
No.
What about heat?
No.
Any glare?
No.
Any vibrations?
No.
Will it produce any type or kind of air pollution?
No.
Any electromagnetic radiation?
No.
Will you store or handle any toxic or noxious materials?
No.
What about hazardous materials?
No.
Do you store any waste material?
No.
Do you believe that this property is suitable for your business?
Yes.
And why is that?
It's a better location for my business. I just, the reason I'm doing this, I just feel a agricultural business downtown Dixon is just not a good fit for it. The current building I'm in is 125-year-old building. It's having its issues. I carry chain in every day. I use the telegraph forklift to move chains around. It's just a way better location.
Do you believe that there's a community need for your business?
I would say so.
And so you, you heard Ms. Duffy reference that the City of Dixon has filed a formal objection to your petition, is that right?
Yes.
And you've been approached by the city regarding the possibility of, of you agreeing to annex your property within the city limits, is that right?
Yes.
And you're not inclined to do so at this time?
Not at this time. I mean, I'm willing to work with them in the future. I'm just, I just want to stay on task of keep moving forward with my plan.
And so it's a fair statement that you're not ruling out the possibility of entering into an annexation agreement with the city at a later date, just not at this time?
Correct.
And you're asking the zoning board of appeals to recommend approval of your petition to the county board?
Yes.
And there's an existing well at this property, is that correct?
Yes.
And have you had that tested?
Yes, Albright out of Walnut came up and tested it.
And what was the result?
The well was, in their words, very good. And they ran the water for two and a half hours and they tested it. It was good. They said the equipment, which I'm assuming he meant the pump, was in good condition. But he also said he, once, he couldn't say anything after that until everything's hooked up.
And do you have plans to have the septic system inspected?
Yes, I had, it wasn't Ron Morris, but it was his brother. And we walked around the property. There's one septic, kind of in the front where the old bathroom is, that's not usable. And there's two septics on the north side of the building. We talked about it. We didn't think it was a good idea to use the one on the north side of the building. So my plan is to go ahead and put in a new septic. And we were out there for about an hour. And there's more than enough room on the property to go ahead and put in a new septic.
And you understand that there's certain requirements as they relate to vegetation within the Lee County Code? Do you agree to coordinate and work with Dee and Alice with the zoning department at the time you apply for a building permit?
Yes.
I don't have anything further to add. Oh, I'm sorry, I have, I have nothing further.
That's what I thought. I'll let the board ask questions. I've got a couple myself. Go ahead, Micah.
I don't really have any questions. She traded all the questions.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, a couple of things. What was the acreage on that lot?
1.3, I believe.
Okay.
1.385.
Okay. Who is a previous owner of record that's on that property? That's all.
He's, he's sitting in the back.
It's an entity of Mark and Christie Rice.
Okay, okay. I didn't know after the hog thing, I didn't know who had it. That's why I was getting that. What's the situation with sales tax on your, on your items you sell?
The farm is exempt, the industrial supplies. One of my, couple of my biggest customers is Benell's Donaldson's. Some of those are taxed, some of them are not.
So would that tax go to the City of Dixon then if it was in the, in the?
If it was annexed in, it would go to the city.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
I can tell you I do pay ST1s every month.
What percentage of your business you think is farm versus the industrials type stuff? I mean ballpark?
70/30.
70 ag and?
Yes.
And the chains that you're selling, are those made in Amboy there or?
Yes, I purchase them from Ally Lock along with other distributors.
So how many trucks a day are delivering chains or how much business?
I'd say approximately 15 to 20 semis a year.
Okay. And how they deliver when you were in Dixon?
They, it's very stressful when they show up because they never call. Some stop right there on Peoria. But most of them now, they go around the back by the post office and they park right there, right by the mailboxes. I've been using Kitzmann's. They help me out with their forklift and the telegraph.
And the shipping of UPS and, and those, where do they, do they load in the back alley too then?
No, I have a trailer, that little wheeled trailer that sits right outside my front door. There could be anywhere, some days, two packages. On a good day, eight to 10. And they pull right up and get out. And if there's, if they're, if they're heavy, they just wheel it out. If not, they just grab them.
What do you do if you're, is you, do you ship packages that are more in weight than what they will handle?
Yes, I do. I don't ship freight very often, but if I do, the semi comes and pulls around the back and I have to use the forklift and load them.
Okay. Let's see. Well then, in your opinion, the reason that the city would like to annex or whatever is probably just the sales tax revenue that they're interested in?
That was my understanding at the meeting. I don't want to put any words in their mouth, but they also didn't want to see a business leave city limits. And then they based it on their potential to develop that area at a later time.
So do they have any intimate domain for better, lack of a better word, that they can annex them anyhow?
I think my understanding of the rule is to the extent that any properties are on city well and sewer, then they can annex, like as a matter of right, so to speak, without consent.
But not beyond that?
No, it'd have to be by agreement.
And you said water and sewers, both you think is a situation with that?
I don't know that it would require both. I think either one would satisfy that.
Water or sewer, okay.
I'd like to add, I didn't even know if that property was, was in the city or county. That's not my intentions was to get out of the city and not pay taxes. It's just a great location. We approached the owner, he said he would sell it to me.
And you're going to pay the same amount of taxes?
Yes.
If you were annexed into the city, you would actually pay a higher tax, is that right? Because the city's rate would also be added to your tax bill?
Yes.
So is that increase in tax that you just mentioned, is that passed on to the customer? Or do you absorb that? You know, if, if, if there's 1% city to, I don't know what the numbers are. If it's 1% more to the city, does that get passed on to the farmer or the, not the farmer?
No, I would, no, I, I, I would absorb that.
You're, you're doing it now?
Yes.
Do you have any employees now?
My sister, she was with me for a year. Actually, she was a little bored. She works at Ken Nelson and just not a lot of people come in on a day. So she helped me through a real rough patch. And she went back to Ken Nelson. My son, who's going to be a senior next year, he's going to work for me this summer. And then my intentions is at the end of the year to go ahead and hire somebody. I'm barely hanging on by myself right now, so I'll definitely need to get somebody. When my father-in-law was there, we actually employed three people.
Is the volume that you're doing now the same as you were doing when your father-in-law was running the, the business or not?
No. We've increased, probably 30%.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
Do you have any plans for any outdoor storage?
No.
That's all.
Basically, on a daily basis, you're going to see my trucks sitting out there. There's no tractors that pull in or, or machinery or anything like that.
You won't have any outside racking that you'd, outlets or anything that you?
No.
Is there anyone like to testify or questions? Oh, okay. What's, one or both?
Just probably one. They'll see what I say first.
Are you just asking questions? Are you, okay, then we'll have you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that testimony you should, shall be the truth? Okay. We need your name and probably your proximity to the property. Go ahead.
My name is Christie Reese. And we are, we actually do own the land that's in question that Mr. Hicks would like to buy. We also have a business that is in the area but is not really, barely adjacent. My comments are based really on an article that appeared in the paper where they quoted the current mayor as saying that he was not going to let a business move out of the city and lose the sales tax. The City of Dixon is not going to suffer a drop in sales tax revenue if Mr. Hicks moves because his business, most of his customers are probably ag or manufacturing exempt. And I find it concerning that some of our city leaders do not understand how sales tax revenue is generated. The collection of sales tax is driven by customers. If a customer If a customer has a sales tax exemption form on file, the business is not obligated to collect sales tax from that customer. Mr. Hicks is going to move his business somewhere. I hope that he will be welcome to stay in the immediate area. The vision he has for his store will be a great replacement for what is currently there. And you may wonder why we're, why we bought that piece of property and why we're selling it. We bought it with the intention of increasing our footprint to the south because there still is a big sign there that the, the adjacent farmland is for sale. After we bought this piece of property, I contacted the realtor on the sign and that's when we were told about the solar project. So, and as some of you know, I was opposed to that because that completely stopped any expansion that we could do for our business. I talked to the city several times about it because they were not on our side. And I was told by two officials that the city had absolutely no interest in moving or expanding the industrial park to the south. Their interest was now going to the east. So that's, we were left with this piece of property has no, we have no use for it. And I hope that we have a great neighbor with Mr. Hicks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? The board on, Mrs. Reese?
Closing statement if we have no other comments. Nope, you'll just see in the amended petition, what Mr. Hicks is seeking is a map amendment to change the zoning and then also a special use that gets tagged with that so he can operate it. So it can't be one or the other. It's just both in conjunction.
So with that being said, this board will need to first?
Can I ask her a question on which, what did you just say there about either or?
So you, you couldn't give him a, he can't get a special use with its current zoning? Like it would have to, the map amendment would have to be granted with the special use.
So there is no either or?
Correct.
I thought you said there was either.
No, I'm sorry. I said there was not. It couldn't be either or.
Correct. So to follow up on what she is saying, we, you'll need to take action first on the map amendment. And should you guys make a recommendation to approve that, then you can move forward with the recommendation on the special use.
Dealing with a map amendment then on procedure, is there anything that we need to do?
So you should have a set of map amendment due process standards before you, also known as the LaSalle factors?
Okay.
It'll still be judged, if I may, it'll still be judged on the same LaSalle factors that you would take on any zoning decision.
Okay.
So the map amendment is exhibit one? Yeah. But that's what we? For the map amendment, do we need to do anything specific such as the finding of fact type stuff? Or just go ahead and do the finding of facts? We're doing the map amendment then? Got to get a legal opinion.
I need to print out the factors from our code, so I will be right back in just a moment.
Oh, okay. If anyone would like to take a minute break or whatever, now would be a good time to do it.
So we're going to be able to use the same finding of facts for both of them?
So what's?
Used to be all open and easy here.
So these are two separate, these are two separate motions then?
Oh, the third, councilman, I think they?
There we go.
Go through the findings of one. They don't have to do one for the special use and one for the map amendment, right?
I would be fine if we went through the findings on one and then go to address the fact that we can say that we adopt the findings as established.
Okay.
So we don't need to go through the list twice.
You want two separate motions, one for the map amendment and one for the special use?
Yeah, we should do two separate motions, but it would be fine to incorporate by reference the findings of that.
One fact, one finding of fact would apply to? Okay. One finding of fact, two motions. She gets back, she's got a copy of the map amendment particulars. Now that was a solar ordinance that she sent out. So we want to use these as different questions for the finding of fact? Do this one?
So when the board makes a decision on, for a map amendment, you must consider those standards when making your decision.
Okay. So we're ready?
Yes, so we're going to have you proceed on that. When we get to the finding of facts, we'll touch base again.
Do we need to make a motion on each one of these standards?
Yeah, we would make motions for first, the map amendment and then second, on the special use. And yes, there should be a separate motion for each factor that we talked about.
So each factor of the map amendment due process, make a motion on each one of those?
Yes.
Just like we do the finding of facts, okay. So we will run through at this point, the map amendment questions and work with them, excuse me. And the map amendment due process standards, consider the following standards and make findings thereon. A, the existing use of nearby property.
So I make a motion that the surrounding land uses and zoning are mainly agriculture. The proposed development has a direct connection to the agricultural community. And given this connection, such a use would not necessarily be completely incompatible with the neighboring agricultural uses. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, it's motion and seconded on the existing uses being surrounded by agriculture. Do we need to reread that?
No.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any questions? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carried. B, the extent of property values will be diminished by any zoning restrictions.
My motion is the property values will not be diminished by these zoning restrictions. Second.
Any discussion on that motion or second? Mike's second? Any questions or discussion on that comment? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the diminishing of zoning restrictions, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carried. Under C, the extent to which the destruction of property values promotes the public health, safety and welfare. Any questions, comments on the destruction?
I make a motion that, that there should be no effects of the proposed use upon public health, public safety and our general welfare.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Aye.
Motion?
No, I said aye.
Aye, yeah. Gotcha. Motion carried. Yeah. The next one, the gain to the public versus the hardship to the individual property owner. What's your response on that?
My motion is there will be no hardship to the individual property owners.
Thank you. Second. By Mike?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of that one, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carried. Moving on, section E, the suitability of the subject property for zone purposes.
This is for the new zone purpose, right? Well, I make a motion that the proposed zoning is compatible with the zoning to the north of the property.
Okay. The motion was that the zoning is compatible. Actually, it's already zoned industrial one, isn't it? It wasn't. It was ag, okay. We're just applying for that, okay. Anyhow, what Mike said, the new zoning request is compatible with the property to the north. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, thank you. F, the length of time the property has been vacant as zoned, considered in the context of land development in the vicinity of the subject property. That's one question we hadn't asked is how long the property's been empty.
The property, my motion is since the property has been vacant as zoned, the considered change would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. The next one, the compatibility of the present and proposed classification with the comprehensive plan. That'd be the county's comprehensive plan. Which I think Mike refers to what you said about property to the north. I'm assuming.
I make a motion that the, that the current zoning of ag one is well, let me start over. I guess I'd make a motion that the proposed change to I one is maybe, I guess you could say it is compatible with Lee County's comprehensive plan because the business that will be in use will be for the benefit of ag in the county.
Okay.
That's not very good.
Wild.
Second, thank you.
The, like you mentioning it, it's going to be I one, but it's still going to be related to the agricultural zoning surrounding three sides, so. And the other thing, just in commenting, that is the nature of what we try to do with zoning is connect the same zoning to the same areas, that type of thing. Let's see, did I ask for that motion?
You have a motion, a second?
Yep, okay, all in favor, aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries, thank you. Checking to see if our clerk is listening to us. And the last one being whether there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use.
I move there is a public need in the neighborhood for the proposed use.
Second.
Okay, Mike's seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Horses. No.
All right, so now we move on to the finding of facts and since some of these are going to be
similar.
You don't want to vote on that first?
Oh, my apologies.
Huh?
My apologies.
Let's vote on the first.
You want to vote on the map?
Yeah.
Okay, would someone care to make a motion on this map amendment?
I make a motion that the Lee County ZBA recommends to the full Lee County Board that petition 23P 1608 be granted.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Second by Rex. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carried, thank you. And?
Now you can move into the finding of facts for the special use petition. Since some of your answers are going to be the same, you can you will be able to incorporate by reference.
I make a motion, we incorporate the findings of facts from the flat amendment to the special use.
Second.
Moved and seconded, incorporate those previous motions into the finding of fact. All in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries, thank you.
I make a motion that, that the Lee County ZBA recommends to the full Lee County Board that petition 23P 1608 be granted for the special use on the property for construction and farm equipment machinery sales.
It was moved by Mike Pratt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rex Meyer. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries.
I have one condition I think I'd like to?
Okay, Mike, go ahead, move on that.
I make a motion that if the Lee County Board approves this petition, that the condition be that the special use is only for the use that was stated and represented under oath. Any other use must be brought before this board for consideration.
Second.
Second. And so the stated use is what is in our petition for this property. Okay. Any other comments on Mike's motion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries, thank you.
I have one more recommendation.
Okay.
That if the Lee County, if the Lee County Board grants the special use, the condition that there be no outside storage on the property.
No outside storage. Second by Mike. Any other comments on that motion? Seeing none. Go to a vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, you guys?
No.
Thank you. Your petition is approved by this board, and will go to the county board the evening of April 20th. Is there any, anything else to cover? I was gonna say.
Thank you.
I would now turn the meeting back over to our Lee County ZBA Chairman.
Congratulations, Doug.
Yeah, thank you. I got mine done a lot faster than getting these done.
If I decide to sell hogs someday, I can't bring them over there anymore. If I decide to sell hogs, I can't bring them over there anymore.
My dad said. Dwight wasn't around, because would you ever imagine going in as a kid, knowing that you're gonna.
Not Dwight, George Hines.
For years and years and years. He used to get. It was a sign, uh, 1997 was the last time they were. They sold hogs there.
Dwight?
Anybody, that was the last time.
I guess, yes.
He said, I can do this, I'm gonna put it up. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. He was.
Did you find your agenda?
I'm looking for it.
I've got one here for you.
Here's the agenda.
Roll. Okay. Moving on. We're to the point on the agenda for the discussion on the meeting times for the May through the June zoning Board of Appeals meetings.
Did you want me to move along with the discussion here?
Yes, please do. You're the one initiating it.
Yeah.
Wanted to pass out.
Which were designated by who? Judge?
No, these are the ones we've already.
And I felt in need.
We were trying to do it in two nights. We were trying to do it in two nights, but, um, it was decided that we needed to do it in three. And that was a question of whether we limit the meetings to two and a half hours like what we have done, whether we extend it, and if we did extend it, how long would it be? We also talked about having two meetings in the same evening, which I suggested maybe we could break, have a pizza, have dinner, and move on to a second meeting. Anyway. Anyway, um, so this is the potential scheduled agenda, and we originally were talking about, um, if we were going to a long extended meeting, that it would be, um, better if we started at six o'clock, which doesn't help our friends that are putting the crops in the ground, and we all want to eat. Therefore, my suggestion would be that we would do these on these four solar farms, and we would try to do them on, at seven o'clock. Limit them to two and a half hours, and move on.
I would concur with that, particularly since we added, um, we added the third day into this, into this schedule. I don't think, after two and a half hours, it gets a little difficult to stay focused. And trying to jam it into two days, including the findings of facts, is a little difficult, so I would, I concur with this current schedule of three days, seven, starting at seven, and limiting to two and a half hours.
The second, the second part of that is, if we were to do that, and we were able to get done with the evidence in one meeting, we would still have the third meeting as the later date for the findings of fact, because the judge says that he needs a week to put them together.
Agreed.
So.
That was my question, how long the judge needed to.
So you haven't publicized the starting date on any of these?
I was waiting for this.
Starting, starting time.
I, I was waiting for this discussion for tonight, and then I would inform the community solar companies tomorrow.
There's no, there's no daytime notification for that May 4th. You don't have to be 30 days out with the starting time. You don't have to publicize the starting time 30 days before the meeting.
No.
Yes. No longer than 30 days, no shorter than 15, is that what you're asking?
15, 15 days.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I'm asking.
Oh.
Three weeks.
Have you sent this out to both Garrett and Ali?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on this, or can we just do this by consensus?
Since you're not varying from your rules, I think a discussion is appropriate, no vote would be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
But we can write on here, 7:00 PM meetings.
You can even announce it if you want.
What's that?
You can announce it if you want to.
Seven o'clock meetings.
Perfect.
Do you have the locations of these properties, so I could, we can view them when we get a chance?
I've got some of the petitions ready to hand out to you after this meeting.
All right.
Get tonight.
Get tonight.
Anything else on this?
Not on that.
Okay. Item D.
All right. Do you wanna introduce it, or?
You wanna do the, oh, um, item D is discuss the Public Act 102-1123, formerly known as House Bill 4412, and proposed amendments to the ordinances governing wind energy systems and solar energy systems in Lee County.
Okay, as you all know.
Is this the short version?
I will, I will try to keep this brief, I mean, it's, I'm gonna let you guys control the time on this. Um, as you all know, in just, on January 27th, the governor signed into law a new public act that takes over the siting standards for wind and solar across the state. Within that public act, uh, we have 120 days to come into compliance with that act, or we forfeit our right to have any protections at all. As you know, we are in the process of amending our ordinances, and I have sent you drafts of both a wind and a solar. The Illinois Association of County Board Members, in conjunction with the Illinois Farm Bureau, created a template for ordinances for counties to consider. Um, we have been following those templates. Uh, what I have found is that they include a lot of what we have covered in our current wind and solar ordinances. I attended a conference last meeting, and it was put on by an attorney from Cone Resnick. Uh, his name is Andrew Keit, K-E-Y-T, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right. Um, but, you know, basically, he cautioned that there, there are a lot of unknowns with this, um, the language is vague, and, and we are kind of moving forward blindly. His answer to a lot of his questions, a lot of the questions was maybe, possibly, might, um, we just don't know. So, we are going forward, following the template of the, um, Illinois County Board Association, and, um. Of course, you are aware that certain things have changed, particularly related to setbacks have been greatly reduced on both wind and solar side. There have been changes to decommissioning standards, we are now relying solely on the EMA to govern the construction and deconstruction standards. We are losing some protection on the shadow flicker side, but they, you know, they're keeping consistent with the 30 hours of shadow flicker per year. The, the noise is consistent to what we've been doing, both on the wind and solar. And so, essentially, I put out those drafts to you guys, does anyone have any questions on those drafts?
So, so there's nothing in here about setbacks?
There should be.
Not in the one I got. I didn't print the whole thing, I missed the pages, too.
Which one do you?
I'm, I'm looking at the solar.
Solar, okay.
There are 18 pages? That's what I printed out.
There was 27.
There's 26 pages with this. Well, no, that's incorrect, 19, I believe.
There's 18 up there.
Um. So. On page eight of the solar, at the very top of the page, it addresses the setback requirements for the solar. Are you finding that page?
Yeah, now I am, yes.
Okay.
Actually, I'm page seven.
So the big change, it reduced it from 400 feet to a, to an participating house, 250.
Yes, so.
Yeah, a little absurd.
Lee County kinda took a unique stance with the setbacks, um, when we recently approved our current ordinance, um, it's actually equivalent to an 800 by 800 foot square centered on the residence. Um, in other words, 400 feet in any directions of the foundation of the home. Um, so we are, that we are losing a lot of protections. Yes and no, I mean, compared to what we have, there is still gonna be 150 foot setback.
Okay, I have a question. Since. Since we, since we passed previous ones under the old ordinance that haven't been built yet, will they still be under the old ordinance?
Those petitions, as far as I'm aware, are bound to the petition, the ordinance that they filed under, so nothing should change from those, they're, they're bound to our current standards. My, my understanding also that any of the ones that we are approving up until May 27th, which is our deadline to come into compliance, will fall under our current ordinance and not.
The new ordinance.
The proposed.
Okay.
So solar, Ambi Solar 1 and Ambi Solar 2 could get divided, we'll know that it'll be based on their, uh, the county.
Filing date. It'll be on the filing date, so whatever date they file, not when they're heard, when they're filed.
And they were all. They should have waited.
You know, we, that's, some, some had talked about it, some are under deadlines, and they don't have time to wait, so they are moving forward, um, with what they got.
So, so this, this ordinance that you give us.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't, it always talks about commercial solar energy facilities.
That is the new term.
But it doesn't talk about community solar, which everybody is filed under.
So if you look at, I think it is. Applicability, um, no prohibition?
Are they differentiating between the two?
Between the two what?
Between community and commercial.
No, technically, no, under our current ordinance, they're, they're, they follow the same ordinance.
Okay.
Um, and, and essentially, that's what this does, any, any energy that is sold commercially, wholesale, off-site use, that's what this ordinance applies to. So in Lee County, we also have an ordinance called solar as an accessory use, and that covers any solar that is generated for onsite use only. So this'll cover anything that is off-site, which includes the community solar, regardless of the size of the project.
The, the meeting you were at. Did, uh, the presenter give a background as to who presented, or who, um, drafted this bill?
The industry. This is completely, um.
I've read stories, but I hadn't seen specifically.
Driven by industry, is my understanding, so.
And then the other thing, which is, as you mentioned, vague, just in general, legislation last 10 years or whatever, has been very vague, and then the courts end up deciding most of the details.
Yes, and so we're, we're trying to eliminate any questions and, and make it as clear as possible, um, but, you know, there still is some uncertainty as to what is considered too restrictive, and, you know, can, are we liable to lawsuit? You know, how, how are the boards supposed to function if, you know, they meet the requirements of the state, but they don't meet, you know, our requirements, our additional requirements, or our comprehensive plan, or our concerns about soils and those related. Um, one of the discussions that was had in Springfield last week is that, um, when considering, it, you, towards the end of the document, there's hearing factors, and that's when you should be doing kind of like your finding of facts, and he said it's, it's kind of, doesn't align with the current statute. Um, and, uh, the special uses require you to go through these Lassalle factors like you did tonight, the, the health, safety, and welfare discussions. Under this new public act, you can consider those findings, and they can all be negative. I mean, they could, you know, on any other project, you would turn it down if you made those findings, but we're in a situation where now we have to look as, have they met the requirements of the state, and what trumps what? So there, there's still some uncertainty with this, and, I mean, collectively, across the state, we're all kind of blindly moving forward, trying to figure this out. But, based on the templates that were given, based on our current ordinances, I, I feel we are not too far off of, of the target. Um, and Lee County is, is pretty current in what they're expecting.
And I would, I would also state, relative to the comprehensive plans, um, as far as the state's concerned, it appears that those go out the door. They're gone. In terms of the wind and solar, they've got a priority. However, um, relative to Lee County, there has been a trailer bill that's already passed the Senate. Uh, House is currently in recess, but it's already passed the Senate, um, that at least for enterprise zones, the enterprise zone that is over there in the Rochelle area, um, is protected. It's still, it's still taken into consideration, um, it's exempt from the state requirements, because you're talking about millions of dollars being put into that enterprise zone. And, but there's still 800 acres in Lee County and 200 in, um, in Ogle County. Remember, we changed that to I-1. So, within four miles of the intersection of I-39 and I-88, there is an exemption, it has to be enterprise zone, um, it has to be already I-1, which we already did, and that's about the only consideration that's been given, um, or has been able to be given, in this trailer bill. Otherwise, comprehensive plans do not appear to mean much.
And, and it's my understanding that there are several, uh, trailer bills being thrown out, and that none of them are really gaining any traction, that it's essentially, if the industry has any issue. the industry has any issue, they're basically getting shot down. This one concerning the Rochelle area enterprise zone, that is gaining traction, and, what is it? Oh. So this is gaining traction, and, and the reason that we had to move forward with this is that the new public act allows solar in any areas that are zoned for ag or industrial. Previously, it was kind of protected, I mean, had we, that's kind of why the county rezoned it to industrial last fall, was to kind of give it that protection and not leave it open to wind and solar. Now with this new public act, that can directly impact that area. So we are working, and we have Tom Demmer and a number of people working to get that to go through.
Like I said, it has passed the Senate.
Yep. So, we started the public hearing on Monday before the Planning Commission. Because everything has been very rushed, and, and I apologize for documents coming out so late and whatever, but we opted to continue the hearing to next Monday, to give the public a little bit more time to review and make any additional changes. Whatever document leaves the Planning Commission on Monday will be the document before the board, and no changes will be able to be made. If any changes are made to that document after the public hearing, we would then have to go through a public hearing again on any amendments. So, on Monday, we anticipate the Planning Commission to make a vote. On Thursday, we will ask the Executive Committee to add it to the county board's agenda for April, on April 20th. We are hoping that the county board will move to hold it over for a month for their rules, and we anticipate a vote on this on May 25th, just shy of the deadline. So that is why we are moving as we are, is we are under the gun. Did anyone have any other questions, concerns?
On page 16 of this solar, and it might be the same in the wind, but it talks about the revocation of the special use permit, and it, it has to be started within 36 months. And we have something in our ordinance like that, too.
Yes.
So that got me to thinking that we've been, we were a long ways out from some of them we've approved already. Are we getting close to the 36 months? Like the one over Stewart, or?
So Stewart received an extension, Hexagon Solar, did they? Last year. Junction Solar, was it Junction or Eldina?
The Gittleson one over there was the first one. That should be.
Mm-hmm.
So how'd they get an extension?
They go before the county board. So according to our ordinance.
And that, that's the way this reads in here, and I, I don't like that. I didn't realize that our ordinance is that. It seems they ought to come back to us, and give us a reason why they want to do that. The, probably the reason for that, going to the county board instead of coming to us, is because the solar farms are not getting built, simply because they can't get their connection onto the PJM.
Yeah, but the, the point is, the county board doesn't have a clue what, what we heard for testimony and the reasons that were given for the whole thing. It just seems like we got more knowledge about it than the county board does.
So it's a very.
It should go through us first.
Very limited, the reasons for an extension are limited as to, is it beyond their control? Do they have any control over this? And so that is a decision the county board can make. Additionally, this is a recommending body, and it doesn't actually make any decisions. So we add a step by having them go back through the zoning board for a decision that can be made.
So how much testimony did they give to the zoning, or to the county board? Because I thought they didn't hear testimony.
They, they present their proof that, you know, whatever the circumstances are. So currently, this, what we're facing is the PJM tie-ups. So they're, they're showing us the evidence that they've been working with PJMs since this date, and they're constantly getting pushed back because of the restructuring that is currently going on. So that's what the county board's looking at, as to whether it is beyond their control or not, as to why they would need an extension. So it's very limited in what they're considering.
PJM's restructuring, or who's restructuring?
PJM is restructuring. They're currently not processing any applications, is my understanding. They're trying to fix a very broken system. Their system before, they were, it was basically in order of submittal, and now they are considering, you know, who's got the zoning, who's got the, you know, everything ready to go.
It's not their transmittal system you're talking about.
No, no, that, it's just their, their process of processing the, the new applications to get on the grid. So, before, you know, projects that would never get built were getting jammed up in the system and pushing back projects that were viable, and so this will help weed some of that out and give priority to the, to the applications that are ready to move forward.
And PJM is a nationwide, not state?
No, it is a, it's actually 13 states it covers. It, it's a regional transmission organization.
And the other, the other thing is, they, they have to be able to build, and they haven't got the capacity right now to take on all the stuff that's coming.
That's been a question for a long time.
But back, back to my point, we can't change that paragraph anyhow, what you're saying. Even if I, if somebody said at the Planning Commission, you know, that I think that ought to be changed and go back to the, the zoning, you can't do it anyhow, because the states made this rule, right?
Yep. If it doesn't comply with the state.
Well, that, and it, it is consistent with what we currently have in place, and I think that was kind of the goal of the county moving forward, is trying to keep it as consistent with our, is what, with what we currently have. So I just don't know if anyone would find it necessary to change that.
I would.
I can include that, your, your suggestion in my notes, so. But I can add that to discussion. I am working with some of the board members, trying to keep them informed of what's going on, so I can.
You can't change it anyhow.
When they run out of the 36 months on, on their special use, when do they get their, or when they do get their extension, how long's the extension?
I think that is determined by the county board. That's typically how we have done it, and that's, I guess, without rereading the paragraph right now, that would be my expectation.
I was wondering if it, we don't know if it's a 30, another 36 months. It probably wouldn't be more than 36 months.
Well, and I would, I would caution the board not to do anything. A lot changes in three years, and you add on another three years, you've got six years of technology changes and everything else, you know, but after six years, it really should come back and be reexamined, because so much changes in, in the, in this industry in a, in a very short amount of time.
So then the county's got to vote it down, vote the extension down.
They, the county board could make that. And, and the zoning office does, you know, work with the county board on that, to, to make sure that they are making an informed decision, and are aware of, you know, what kind of relationship we've had with these companies? Have they been in contact with us? Are they working with us? So that they're not just saying, you know, yeah, here, take another three years blindly, so.
So as far as decommissioning, like, we don't have control over how much surety or bond they give us anymore? Or do we, is our?
We do and we don't. It's still going to be based on a decommission cost estimate. The change to this, though, is that the state is allowing them to consider salvage value as part of that cost estimate. At the seminar last week, the attorney, this language that is before you talks about, there's a decommissioning plan, the decommission cost estimate, and a decommissioning agreement. And that decommissioning agreement is where we would address some of those issues. So, we might have some.
So we can still hit, require a bond or escrow?
Yes, yes, we can. We were requiring, I believe, 125% of a cost estimate. So under this, they are strictly, whatever that cost estimate says, and there is some give and take with that. We can say, I disagree.
We can dispute their number.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we can bring in our own experts. This language does allow us to hire consultants, engineers, any expertise we need to get through these petitions at the expense of the applicant. So, I look forward to that.
Are other states in the same situation as Illinois with this legislation? Anybody else?
As far as the state taking over?
Yeah.
Yeah, Wisconsin has been, the state has, has controlled wind and solar. So this isn't anything new. Unfortunately, the reason it happened in Illinois is we have a number of counties that are not willing to consider these projects at all, don't have zoning and whatnot. And even though our governor a couple of years ago said that he would not take away that home rule, here we are, so.
How much, how much solar is in Chicago area where these people are from that voted it in?
Hardly any. I mean, you can't, there's just no.
They just want it from here to there. That's why they need to talk to JPM.
And that's the thing.
PJM.
It's far removed from them, that's, that's not their concern.
And that was the initial plan, was to put on all the, to put on all the brownfields on the south side of Chicago.
Right.
And they haven't done anything.
Right.
And that's got no bogeys drop. It's right at Chicago.
So it basically moves, I think, it basically moved it away from Chicago. So, so that's where we're at. Not really where we want to be, but that's where we're at, and so we're trying to make the best of it. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Any more good news? We recessing? Or did we recess?
No, we haven't yet.
So.
That was the last of the items?
That is the last of the items. So, can we have a motion to recess?
Until after the full county board meets, I will do so.
Okay. Glenn motions and Rex seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion adjourned.